Okay. I apologize. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Apologize for the late start. We do have a public hearing, but first off, I would like to read the statement in regards to having the Zoom meeting. As Chair of the Mascoma Valley Regional School Board, School District School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the governor's emergency order, number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, members of this public body are authorized to meet electronically. The physical location of this meeting is at the Mascoma Valley Regional High School. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing additional public access to the meeting by telephone and Zoom. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporarily during this meeting through this platform and the public has access to the contemporary sorry, listen and if necessary participate in this meeting by clicking the link to the Zoom meeting ID 89449829226 or dialing the following phone number, We previously gave notice to this public of the necessary information for assessing the meeting using Zoom or telephone via the meeting notice. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the Mascoma Valley Regional School District. Thank you. I will call a public hearing to order at 6:08. This public hearing notice is on the proposed SPSRF supplemental supplemental Public School Response Fund in the amount of $213,600 for COVID-related expenses pursuant to RSA 198720-B. Deb, I believe this would be something for you.
Yes, this is the Gopher money that the state has given to the school district. You have in your packet the actual allocation report from the state. The requirements of this money is that it must be all spent by December 1st and it only can be used for COVID-related expenses that were not previously budgeted or planned for.
Okay. Do I have any board members that want to have any questions, comments? I have no hearing on my microphone, so. I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's the computer. Okay. I'm just trying to see if it's the computer. Tim, can you hear me? Can you say?
Yeah. Okay. Yep, I can hear you just fine. You hear, you sound just fine.
Okay. Small. All right, somebody, somebody talk.
What?
Brody, are you there?
Nothing. Is your computer on mute? No. Nope. That's all right, go ahead. Any of the other board members have any discussion?
Can you hear off mic?
You're, you're on zero, that's why you couldn't hear.
Okay.
You just need to follow your mic.
All right, here you go, thank you. Sorry, everyone.
Yeah, I like the other one with the mic, I can control it better.
Sorry again, everyone. Okay.
I'm just going to talk to see if you can hear me.
Yes, Danielle, thank you. Hope, Tim, Bridgette, any comments or questions on the public hearing notice?
Nope. I'm sure we have plenty of places for that money to go.
I'm sure we do too. And Hope, you're all set? Okay, thank you. All right. Seeing there's no other comments or questions in regards to the public hearing, I will close that at 6:11. Is any members of the public would like to say anything about the COVID public hearing funds? Thank you, Mr. Dr. Bouffet. Okay, we'll move on. So 6:11, we will call the meeting to order and I please would ask everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you for the reminder. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Okay, at this time, I will need a statement from Tim Josephson, Bridgette LeBree and Hope Stragnell in regards to their attending the meeting via Zoom.
Yes, this is Tim Josephson. I am in Kanan, New Hampshire and I am alone in this room, but my family, two daughters and my wife are home in the house with me.
Thank you. Hope?
Um, I am Hope Stragnell. I'm in Chicago and I am not attending physically at the meeting because of reasons of COVID-19.
Thank you. Bridgette?
Bridgette LeBree, I'm at home in Enfield and I am the only person in the house.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the public and non-public meeting minutes of November the 10th, 2020.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from November 10th, public and non-public.
Thank you, Tim. Second. Danielle Thompson, thank you. Do we have any questions, any comments? Any changes to the meeting minutes? Any corrections? I did not have any myself. Kathleen, we good?
The minutes of November 10th omitted the correction from Kathleen Thompson to, I believe, Danielle Thompson. It was in the list of items that I had brought up.
Okay.
Do you need more information where that was?
Right, because right here at the beginning of it, it's the statement. I believe those were the changes, correct? That you had requested? On page one of the public meeting minutes?
I, I don't understand what you're saying.
On the page one of the public meeting minutes that we're looking at right now, the changes that you had requested are right there at the first paragraph at the bottom.
Correct.
Okay.
But what's not recorded in those changes is that on page six, I think it was line three, it's not Kathleen Thompson.
Gotcha. Got it, Kamala? Okay, Kami's got it. Thank you. I was like, I couldn't quite catch what you were saying at first. I was like, where? Okay. That's okay. All right. Besides that one change, is there anything else from anyone? Okay. Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote, seeing we have three members on Zoom all in favor of the meeting minutes of Tuesday, November 10th with the one change signified by saying aye when I ask. Tim Josephson?
Aye.
Bridgette LeBree?
Aye.
Hope Stragnell?
Aye.
Danielle Thompson?
Aye.
Kathleen Stacey?
Aye.
Bruce DeGoe? Cookie Hebert, yes. So we are unanimous, 700. Okay, next up is our COVID-19 regional update with Dr. Bouffet.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Good. Um, I believe you should have a the usual report in your packet regarding the statistics. Luckily, as far as I know, there have been no new cases of school-related COVID within our district. There are continuing to be a small number of school-related cases overall in our region and some requiring some short school closures, but no long-term school closures. Regionally, cases are increasing significantly in the communities and there are spiking case rates in both New Hampshire and Vermont. Quite concerning. Please grant me a few moments for some important considerations, if you will. While it is still mostly sunny here in the upper Mascoma Valley regarding COVID-19, very dark storm clouds are rolling over our surrounding hills from all directions. Luckily, the district COVID response plans have not yet been retested by further cases. Adjustments, however, may need to be maybe needed as cases increase in our own microcosm, surrounding communities and states. I understand the Lebanon football team had to forfeit the New Hampshire State Championship game due to an exposure during the semifinal game. Also, that district has decided to forego winter school sports. For the time being, our district is cautiously pursuing some winter sports. If our district needs to close down winter sports while still being able to continue in-person learning, serious consideration would be needed to require those students who choose to play on traveling teams switch to an all-remote learning. This may generate pushback, but it would be necessary for the health of the whole MBRSD community, students, teachers, staff, their families and our communities. Currently, a gathering of 10 unrelated people in New Hampshire has an estimated 6% chance of that someone in attendance is infected with COVID, quite possibly part of the 40% without symptoms. Elsewhere in New Hampshire, that chance increases to as high as 16% and as high as 90% elsewhere in the country. As the holidays approach, we as leaders of our MBRSD communities need to personally live and to effectively communicate necessary public health measures as we have been, social distancing, mask use and hand washing while we await wide availability of effective vaccines. I recently saw a public sign saying, quote, "Wearing masks sucks. Do it anyway," end quote. I could say the same thing, saying something similar regarding the necessary sacrifices we all need to make at this time of year. Celebrate Thanksgiving with only your household. If you travel despite such advice, please self-quarantine for 14 days. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bouffet. Does the board have any questions or comments for Dr. Bouffet? Okay, Danielle, yeah?
So the only thing that I would add there is that Lebanon did approve at their last school board meeting. So just to give, just to give that information, just wanted to correct that.
I didn't hear what you said, Danielle.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lebanon did approve winter sports 8-1 at their last board meeting and I believe they're on our winter sports calendar along with the other folks in our bubble.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comment or questions from anyone in regards to the COVID update?
I just want to say thank you as always to Dr. Bouffet for having all this great information for us and thanks for the reminder about, you know, if we are traveling, if students are traveling, hopefully their families self-quarantine when they come back. Hopefully no one's traveling and hopefully numbers are low for that and people are staying with their immediate family. But thank you, Dr. Bouffet.
And I actually, I just wanted to make one other comment because I think there's a misunderstanding about testing too. And if you do think that you were in the exposure or you were exposed or you have traveled and you want to get tested, it's not something that you can do the next day or even two days after. You really should be looking at a minimum of seven days, if not 10 days, before you even get tested. So I think people just, you know, just to be cautious, if you're fearful of it, you still need to isolate until the appropriate time to get the testing or else it's just a potential waste of time and money and you could be exposing people unintentionally anyways.
Thank you, Bridgette. Any other comments for, or questions?
One other quick note is that Chad has updated their guidance for education and communities as far as the preference for in-person learning versus remote and some additional links to some of the other research that's out there. So you can find that on the Chad website.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, Dr. Bouffet, thank you as usual for your information and your guidance on all of this. You know, scary times are still back with us, so thank you again. I'll open it up for public comment at this time. We do not have anyone here in the auditorium. So if you would like to say something via the Zoom link, please use the marker of the raise your hand. And also, there's a couple of people that are listed here, like I have an iPhone or something. We need to know who you are, so we need some last name, first and last names, if at all possible. If you could correct that and change that, that would be great for the minute taker. Okay. I'm not seeing anyone. Or wave at me if I have missed someone, please. Okay, not seeing anyone at this time. Continuing business, student representative report. And that is you.
Excuse me? There we go.
There you go.
Hello to everyone. So I think this upcoming Thanksgiving break is a good thing for everybody. We've been, there's been a lot of stress and stuff going on just because of COVID and everything, even though you can't like travel and see your family, you're still getting some like time off. And so that's helpful for kids like that do multiple things during like such hard classes and they do extracurriculars. It gives them a time to kind of unwind and get some good sleep. And so, yes, we had to take a break, but I think there's a flip side to it as well. It helps like the mental health and like the physical health of the students as well to kind of take this time to recover. So, that's good. Um, I'm pretty sure National Honor Society is doing a food drive for Thanksgiving and the rays are heating or I think winter carmelas. And there is a bin out by like the little, where you come in by the main office. There is a somewhere where you can put food to be donated. So we all, even though we don't necessarily have like the usual food drive, we have altered it to help the families that need the food, it's still available. I've been hearing from some students that the work that like the teachers are assigning can be a little bit much with this new like block scheduling because they're trying to fit a year's worth of homework or like work and stuff into half a year. So that's been stressful for some kids. Because even though you have longer time, you still have a shorter time. So some kids are getting a little bit stressed out about that. But I think other than that, I think kids are looking forward to winter sports. It still can go on. They're excited for that. But pretty much that's it's everything that's happening in the school right now. Any questions?
No, no questions?
Thank you, Isabel.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that update and you're free to go if you'd like to go because I know you must have homework.
No, she's got like four days off. Isn't this what every high schooler wants to do? Spend their day before vacation in a school board meeting?
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Isabel. All right, next on the agenda is the Budget Committee. In our packet, we do have, I believe, the last two meeting minutes, November the 9th and November the 16th. I did attend in in place of Hope for the November 16th, which is the most recent meeting. That was a workshop for the Budget Committee alone. And we had gone through the budget and there was also a presentation in regards to our SRO which was part of a discussion that we had at a couple of those budget meetings in regards to the expense of it and the continuation of having an SRO here within the district. And it was only a discussion. It was nothing that was going to be finalized or, you know, changed this year. But Chief Frank, our Police Chief of Kanan came and asked to do a presentation in regards to the SRO and the importance of the program. And our current SRO Officer Matt Button was also there as well. Both of them spoke in length in regards to what the SRO does for our district, what it does for our children. And it was quite enlightening, some of the numbers. And I think the conversation will be continuing in another cycle in regards to the program itself, maybe changing the needs of that program to fit a district better and be a little bit more cost-effective for the district as well. Other than that, there were no other changes in regards to the budget. And the budget is, Deb, you can correct me and if I'm wrong, is less than 1% on the budget in regards to an increase. So the belts have been tightened and we have really I, all the admins, Deb Ford, our administrators, you've all done a fabulous job in regards to being bringing this budget to a palatable case for our our communities to be able to handle. So thank you for that. If anyone has any questions or any comments in regards to anything that regarding the budget process or the meeting minutes, I can answer what I can, otherwise Deb is here as well. Is there anyone?
Cookie, I have a, it's more like a, a kind of a comment. I appreciate you, you know, you bring up the SRO that it's informational only and just discussion only. But what I, the, the information that was presented in the minutes was really good information.
Yes.
And I wondering if, I mean, I didn't, I don't remember ever seeing a report that is presented, you know what I mean, an annual, you know, just, I'm, I'm thinking maybe moving forward, we might ask for that or get, you know, just some like yearly, annual where we're at.
Right.
And that might be something to consider, that's all.
It was definitely an eye-opener, Hope. You know, there was some numbers there that I hadn't realized that, or some conversations I didn't realize that we had had to handle here. So maybe that's something to think of at the end of the school year, you know, have the SRO come and just give an overview of what the year was and maybe there's some programming or something that we could help with as we do come into the budget season to be able to help in the year coming up. So no, you're right. I, I think that was a good conversation to have and I think the numbers that were represented were quite enlightening, so.
And it's certainly something we should be tracking. I mean, that's all, you know, maybe it's the EIC or, you know, it's just tracking, it's on the radar, you know.
Right.
Annually or whatever.
All right, and I, I think that's why I mentioned that the conversations to come in regards to what this position needs, what we need, the cost-effectiveness of the program and how we can move forward, I think is going to be something in our near future, which I hope we can all work on. So, thanks, Hope. Anyone else? Tim?
Yeah, I like, I agree with Hope. I really like the detail and the depth that they went into. That's more than we've ever gotten at a school board meeting. So, you know, as we look at this position in the future and what does that entail? Because it was good to see all the history of it and all the stuff that they've done. You know, I, I think probably like an end of the year, like as we look at the position, like maybe an end of the year report to the school board, kind of saying this is what we've done this year, you know, just to kind of build that bridge more, so.
Right.
But I appreciate that.
All right, thank you, Tim. Anyone else in regards to this budget meeting? Oh, Danielle, Brad, I see you.
Yeah. So I think I didn't attend the Budget Committee work session because it was a Budget Committee session. Definitely, I'm interested in, in hearing and seeing what kind of presentation about the SRO position took place. I think that would be, knowing that that can, that is a hot topic in some school districts. Something that would be beneficial to do in the presentation slot to allow the public also ask questions at some time in, in the future.
Right, and I, and I think that was going to be part of the plan anyway, to be able to, like I said, like I said, I was amazed at some of the information that was out there. I mean, I, you know, we've had a few SROS that come through and I don't think I've had anything as detailed as that. So it was, like I said, pretty enlightening, but future conversations, hopefully we'll bring a little bit more of that to us on a more basis. Okay, so if that's it on that budget meeting and the SRO piece, I'll move forward. Brewster?
I just wanted, I just want to reiterate that there's a lot of SROS in different school districts. I've met a bunch of them and they interact with a lot of the students. The SROS actually are in the school more than just one officer. They're in there working out. I know of some schools, they went and worked out in the gymnasium with a weight group before this epidemic hit. They're very valuable and I don't want to see this come up to eliminate this position. I really, I think it's a valuable, invaluable position that I don't care what the money is. I know what the money is. I've seen the amount. You can't put a price on that when it comes to these kids interacting with SRO on and off the school grounds. So as far as much as your eyes goes, I know the money is not that much, but you've got to look at what they do. And as I said, I've seen it in other school districts. I don't, I really, I'm adamant, I will not, I will not be in favor of eliminating this position. Next couple of years, I'm on this board until I'm, I'm gone. So I just want to bring that up because I've seen that with other school districts and Matt does a great job and he does a lot of things that people don't realize, that not even that before on the outside.
Thank you, Brewster. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. I'll move on. Wellness Committee, you met on November 17th. And who is on that? Danielle, are you on Wellness?
Sure, and I'm just going to ask, because I know that there's a little bit of feedback because there's a couple of mics that are open right now. I think Brewster, yours is still open, there we go. And Cookie, great. I'm hoping that might help because I think I'm kind of muffled with my, with my mask on. You have the minutes of the Wellness Committee in your, in your packet. We took the bulk of the meeting with some conversation with Alice Ely of the Upper Valley Public Health Network and follow-up to talk more about lead poisoning and we talked about the, we talked about testing from our Mascoma Valley towns and what are some of the ways that, that we could look at policy to try to get more testing of lead Um, to try to get more testing of lead levels in children in our district. Because there's such, uh, such an impact on potential special education services, um, and budget. Um, that are related. Um, so there's gonna be some, uh, both some work on the policy angle. Um, Claremont has a policy in place and that's one that we would review. And so we have some of our school nurses that are gonna be looking at that. And so I would not be surprised if we see that, uh, at a board meeting. Um, early next year. And then, uh, we also talked about the. Uh, Amanda has, has mentioned a number of times how valuable and interesting the. Presentation and training that she has attended, um, has been. And so also talked about. Um, using that presentation slot at a board meeting to be able to provide some information to the full board and to the community. About the impact of lead and, uh, and, and public health. So that, again, look for that in probably early. Early two thousand twenty-one. We did some follow-up conversations around headlights, around the food pantry and food services. Um, all that is, is in the, um, is in the minutes. And then our next meeting will be just before we have our. Uh, our next, uh, school board voting and reorganization. So that'll be on March second. At three thirty in the high school library as well as on Google Meet. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Oh, there he is. Okay, Dr. Buffet, sorry.
I'd be happy to be a part of that, uh, um, task force and presentation too.
Thank you. Thank you, Danielle, for that presentation. Thank you, Dr. Buffet, for that offering. Thank you. Anyone else have any comments from the board? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on. Educational Issues Committee meeting that met on November nineteenth. Who is the chair of?
Me.
Oh, Bridget.
All right, so, um, we had asked for an update with the Remote Learning Academy. And just to hear kind of how it was going, um, needs that have popped up. Or successes that had also, um, come up. So we know that, and I had commented that. I'm sure all of our staff kind of felt like they got put back in, in day one of their career where all the lesson plans you had. Always used and had, all of a sudden. Had a nice big twist on it. Um, so it sounds like everyone is doing pretty well. The numbers have stayed relatively the same. Um, there wasn't a huge increase or drop. It just kind of was a shuffle of, of numbers. Um. Most things seem like they're going pretty well. I think that Harrison had mentioned. Um, if, if it was something that we looked at going forward, that it was a bit of a challenge. With teachers who were teaching two grades. And had, so they had two sets of curriculum. So some of our teachers are teaching third and fourth grade or first and second. Um, and instead of doing that, potentially combining so that you had. One teacher who would teach both Canaan and Enfield Elementary Schools in first grade. And another one who would do second grade. And that way it would just help with the time commitment that this does take to do all of that. Uh, so it was, it was highly interesting. It sounds like there's been definitely a lot of positive feedback on the Remote Academy. And, um, it sounds like things are going pretty well, even with such a huge shift. Uh, Kevin did also point out though that Reddicker. With such a frequency and high volume of adjustments, it is struggling a little bit to catch up. So. Um, you know, I'll just, I think, i- in my opinion, it was a good observation and just things that we can look at in the future as we adjust to. What? What observations we've, we've made and what changes we might make going forward. And if we do keep this, what would be better for all of our, our staff? So.
Okay, thank you, Bridget. Do we have any questions or any comments? Okay. Thank you so much for that report. And I believe. Next meeting for you is December seventeenth at six P M at the, in the high school library. Okay. Superintendent's report. Hello, Amanda.
Hello, Cookie. Yeah, am I coming through on the microphone?
Yes.
Okay. You do have my written report in your packet. Uh, I took my, I took this opportunity. To outline the new travel guidance, uh, as put forth by Governor Sununu. I will say that he did not change the limitations, uh, as far as. Having the travel outside, the travel guidance be outside of New England. So those parameters still remain. However, in order to get out of quarantine, um, he did put forth the option and you'll see that there are bulleted numbers there. Um, that you have a PCR test, not the rapid response test. It's a PCR test. On day seven of your quarantine or later. That test does need to come out negative. The person does need to be asymptomatic. And they have to have no known close contact to a person with COVID nineteen. Um, so through that information, people could be allowed to return prior to the fourteen days. Of the required quarantine after having traveled outside of New England. So we do have only a small handful of students and staff that have reported that they would be traveling either during the. Thanksgiving break or during the holiday break in December. Um, so those parents have been very good at communicating that their students will be out. And the principals at those buildings have made accommodations. And we have also. At the SAU office worked with the, I believe we only have one employee right now that has reported that she will be traveling. So we are working with her on the best way for her to continue to instruct her students if possible while she is in quarantine.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Amanda? Tim?
Yes, um, thank you for putting this in there. Um, do we have a way that we're, uh, transmitting this information to parents? Or, uh, to students and stuff like that? Um, I know they all left for school for the vaca- for the break today. But I was just wondering if there's any way, are we putting that out there in a blast or, or anything like that? Because. You know, a lot of parents might not know this or might not, because it changes so rapidly. So that's my question.
Yep, so Tim, what we have done is the principals have all this information and they have contacted anyone that has reported that they would be. Out on quarantine. So that was the route we took rather than blasting it out to everyone. Instead, we personally contacted people that were, had reported that they would be out to let them know. That there was another option rather than the fourteen days.
And would they be like, uh, would the kids be able to, uh, log into remote learning? I know, I know we don't want them hopping back and forth. But for like the, you know, for the two, for the fourteen days that they're in a quarantine because their family traveled, is that something they're able to do?
Uh, per grade level, we have made different accommodations. But it really depends on how, the age of the student and what we're able to provide.
Cool.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Any questions? Any comments? Okay.
Cookie, I have one.
Yep, Danielle.
So, I wonder, I know that I've seen in a number of the quarterly reports that there, um. Continue to be concerns about not having enough subs. Is that something that we need to continue to? Try to address? Or are there things that, um, you know, that we need to consider? Um, to help alleviate or to, to help, um, schools to, to manage that. That, that need or that gap between, uh, staff that need to be out. And not necessarily for travel, but for regular illness that comes up, um, or COVID quarantine. Um, and the number of subs that we have available.
So you will, uh, be asked to approve three new substitute candidates. Uh, at this, in the non-public session of this meeting. So we are still having people that have applied and are willing to come in and sub. I would say on a good day, on a non-COVID day, we don't have enough substitutes. I don't think there's a district in the entire state. That can tell you that they're, that they have enough substitutes. So we're doing the best that we can. Uh, we do have one person that is out on leave because of travel. That will be looking potentially to come back early. The other people that we have out on quarantine are, um, out because of. Your recommendations from DHHS. So there is a strong chance, you know, that we may find a time. Where we do not just have people out on quarantine and we simply cannot staff the schools, which will cause. The schools to pivot to remote learning, but we are prepared for that, um, occurrence should it happen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Amanda, for that. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to the Business Administrator's Report. Deb Ford.
Thank you, Cookie. You have my written report in your packet. Um, also in your packet is the, uh, proposed Superintendent's Budget for School Board Approval. Um, and as Cookie referenced, the total increase is less than one percent, point nine eight of one percent. Um, you also have the, um, the default budget for approval in your packet. And the default budget is more than the budget this year as we might have expected. It's, um, one point seven percent higher than the. The proposed budget, two hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and six dollars. And that is for all the reasons we've previously discussed at the budget meeting. The teacher contract year two, the support staff contract year three, the New Hampshire Retirement System. Average increase of over three percent, health insurance increase of three point two percent. And a dental insurance increase of three percent. Those total increases would amount to eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars if we had not made other cuts throughout the budget. So, um. It's the reason for the increase of the default budget over the proposed budget. Um, I also wrote about the warrant articles that I, um, think we'll have in March this year. There'll be the budget. Um, there'll be, um, one school board and one budget committee from each Canaan and Enfield this year. Um, and I, I anticipate having three capital reserve requests. Five thousand for accreditation, twenty-five thousand for cafeteria equipment. And between seventy-five and a hundred thousand for facilities. Um, I'll have the capital improvement plan for the finance and facilities meeting, um, next Wednesday. So that will come to the board on the eighth. Um, and I would also, um, like to have a warrant article, um, to increase the two point five percent amount we can retain. And increase that to five percent as the law has changed to allow school districts to retain up to five percent.
Okay, thank you, Deb. Uh, you'll be bringing those warrant articles to our next meeting in December eighth, including the one to raise the. Retain the unassigned fund now. Okay.
Yeah, I already have, I have those all in the, um, the DRA online system.
Okay.
Ready to go.
All right, great. Any questions for Deb? Any comments? Thank you again, Deb. This is a. Lot of hard work and I know, you know, you really knuckle down on a lot of things. So very appreciative of that.
You're welcome. And I also want to thank all of the principals and the other administrators for, um, working really hard to keep this budget. Um, level funded because that, you know, that was our goal during a pandemic. Um, it makes sense to level fund the budget, um, as best we can. About taxpayers.
Right, thank you. Okay, anything for Deb? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to educational funding in New Hampshire.
Uh, there's no, nothing new, but that's just because the task force is wrapping up and should have their recommendations soon. Uh, and I hope you all got the, uh, email that I forwarded to Amanda, uh, with the stuff I referenced last week about the UNH study. As well as, um, I can't remember what else the other thing was, uh, yeah, related to that. So, uh, it was an article. That's what it was. Um, yeah, so we'll find out what's, what, what their recommendations are by the end of December.
Thank you, Jim. Public comment and response update. I believe there is nothing to report.
No, no update at this time.
Okay, thank you. The Aspen Institute Project Play. I think we've kept that on there just as continuing business. I don't believe we have anything at this point. No, Danielle, okay.
Nope, nothing yet.
Thank you. Moving on to quarterly reports. Everyone's been so patient. All right, first up, we have the Special Education record, uh, report, Chris Beaso. Hello.
Hi, how you guys doing? Um, so yeah, hats off to all of our, all the special educators, um, support staff, uh, related services. For navigating their way through this first quarter, um, in this new world order that we're, we're living in. Everybody's done a. A tremendous job and sort of, um, putting this report together for you guys, um, tonight. Um, just how much, uh, uh, training we've actually been able to get in, you know, we're, we're really trying to limit. Because of the sub issue, we're trying to limit the, the number of times teachers are actually out of the building or. Out of the classroom to attend training. So, um, even, even though we have not, um, been tapping the sub pool. We've still gotten a lot of training in. We've had, um, folks, uh, training on a new program called Goalbook. Um, we've had folks at the beginning of the year doing their annual de-escalation training. Um, around COM, um, which is presented by the New England Center for Children. And then. Erin Mills is our, our, our in-house CPI trainer and she's been taking care of the, um, middle, middle school. Um, we've had presentations done, um, for our elementary staff on, um. Trying to work with children with challenging behavior. Um, we also, um, have continued our relationship with Dr. Yakli as well. Who, at the beginning of the year, retooled her presentation to really focus on social emotional learning and. Um, uh, and, and I guess just overall emotional health, not only for students but for staff as well as we. You know, we, it was a lot of anxiety sort of moving into, into August and September. And so I think, I think Cassie did a really great job with helping to frame. Um, getting us back in the building and working with everybody. Um, we've had lots of other professional development as well. Um. Um, and we do have some challenges. Um, we do see that there has been a marked increase in mental health challenges. So. To help with that, um, we have added a, a clinician from West Central who comes to the district two days a week. Um, and is able to, um, get to a couple of the different buildings and is, is sort of building a small caseload. Um, depending on, um, um, who gets referred to them. So I know that this is one of the things that Amanda had been. Um, wanting for a really long time and the opportunity came up and we jumped on it and. And, um, that seems to be working out really well. Um. Um, you know, other, other challenges is, is, it's a challenge for everybody is. Is sort of navigating the whole quarantine process when staff are coming in and staff are coming out. Um, and then how many staff do you actually have? And, and I'll be honest that we haven't. We haven't gotten to that point, but we've come close a couple of times, as Amanda has said. We've come close a couple of times to. Not being able to run a particular program or, um, a, a particular classroom for kids. But so far it hasn't happened, but we've come dangerously close. So, um, we, that continues to be a challenge for us. Um. Um, uh, other, other changes worth, uh, worth noting for you guys. Uh, we've had some changes to out of district placements. Um, we've had, uh, one student who was attending, uh, one of our out of district placements. Um, left earlier, um, toward the end of the summer and, um, moved to a different district. We had another student who aged out and turned twenty-one. Um, we've had, uh, another student who was already attending a, a day placement. Who was placed residentially by DCYF. So essentially what that means is the state picks up the cost of the residential. We continue to pay for, for the educational piece. Um, and then the last piece is, you know, the community involvement. Um, a- again, navigating our way through this pandemic is. Is really, um, a, a challenging piece. Um, but we do have, um, for some of our more involved kids, we do offer, um, some, uh, remote parent training. For, um, for some of our kiddos as well. So, um, you know, we do the, we do the best we can and, um, you know, hats off to. All of, um, you know, our special education and related services staff. Paraeducators who are the backbone of, of, of everything we do, everything, everybody's just done an awesome, awesome job this first quarter.
Thank you so much, Chris. Do we have any questions for Chris on his report tonight? I, I did have one question. Uh, the challenges of the remote learning, you know, with a. Uh, regular ed child versus a special ed children, it's, I'm assuming is, is tenfold. Do we, do we have? Do we, do we have any respite type programs for our parents that are dealing with the children on a 24/7 basis? Is there anything that we're doing remotely to be able to assist them to be able to make sure that they're okay too? Is that what the parent involvement piece is about here that you were talking about?
The parent involvement piece would be, be more for our, our kiddos who are placed in our, in our neck program as a part of, of the contract that they have is to be able to work, work directly with parents on, you know, on parent training, on how do, how do we sort of, you know, be able to have a, a student with some significant disabilities in, in raising them? So other respite kinds of things, we can certainly refer and have referred people along to home-based, if they need home-based services or if they need to get in touch with our local area agency pathways. So I, I think more and more we are seeing that, that like I said, the, the mental health challenges as for some of our, for some of our kiddos, middle, middle high school has been, it's definitely been an uptick.
Right.
Since coming back.
Right. And I know that, that respite piece that I was referring to and the agencies that you would refer in for the home-based issue help would be there again. You know, another piece of COVID, you know, it might not be welcomed into the house because of the COVID issue, not so much that they don't want the help, but you know, there's just so many components there. But I was, I'm just thinking of the parents and making sure that they're okay.
Yeah, and a lot of the available home-based, home-based services, you have to be involved with DCYF at this point as well to be able to access some of those services. So, so parents have to be open and willing to want to pursue those.
Right. All right, lots of challenges. Thank you, Chris. Anyone have any questions or comments? I appreciate your time and all you've done, Chris. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
You too, thank you. Next up, we have the Technology Quarterly Report, and we have Craig Studi with us.
Thank you. Thank you. Like everybody else, the technology department continues to meet challenges head-on. Despite losing our tech integrate, we've been able to support all district members with technology support adequately. Now, we're supporting currently more than 1,800 devices in a K to 12, one-to-one device environment in schools and households. You know, we are doing well or adequately, especially what I heard with the remote learning. And not to mention those situations where when we do go remote, you know, that we continue to support the, well, the off-distance, the off-school students and teachers as well. The, the point where I'm at though, it's interesting, is I, I think we are meeting challenges as well. I, I think we're, we're doing an adequate job. You know, when I look at certain reports and records and diagnostics. And so I, I start to wonder though, how we could do a little better? And I wish we would get, you know, more feedback as well. We, we are sending out more surveys. We've sent out some last week, but we're going to slowly send out some more. But I think it's really crucial to start, you know, learning too as well, more of the environments that people are connecting their devices to and where they are and what their speeds are for internet so that we can better even support. So I think we're doing adequate in that area, but I think we can do better. And I think we're at that point, but we need that information to know. You know, especially if people are struggling with some connection issues. We do still share out and loan out the MiFi devices, the hotspots. I think we're up to about 1,450 now, and those seem to be adequate. But again, you know, if we can do better, we just need to know what we can do. In terms of communication, we've changed from one alert system, the Blackboard, to School Messenger. That has been deployed over the last month or so, and where our delivery rate is between like 99 and 100%. We've had great efforts based on, a couple of weeks ago, when we were doing some trials with School Messenger. Amanda gave us a spirited task to improve it some more. And so we've been constantly updating the databases because really it's, 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 it's good data in, good data out. And so as long as our data is refined and massaged, the better School Messenger will meet everybody out in the community that needs to get a message. And we're also continuing to work on, you know, all of our communication modalities that we use and the protocols to help improve communications. It's an ongoing thing. I have been looking at, you know, the video conferencing records, the Google Meet, Google Meet and Google themselves to continue to do updates, which sometimes causes some nuanced issues amongst users. But when I look at a lot of the reports, again, I see adequate communication results in terms of adequate bandwidth and usage and sound and video and audio. Not all perfect, but they all seem to find, fall into inadequate range that I look for when we do these. And also as part of the new normal, and a lot of tech directors that I, I talk with, you know, in relation to security, you know, distance learning and the new normal has certainly, you know, created threat to schools as it relates to cyber attacks. And the double whammy there is, you know, we've also adjusted all of our stuff on the backend in regards to technology to support the diverse needs that are out there. And sometimes when you do that, you know, security sometimes lessens in order to ensure that the delivery of education is met in all the modalities that are out there. And so I'm constantly trying to revise and refine that, but with the main mission to support the student and teacher workflow. And so that's been a, a constant balance and act to maintain security, but adequate workflow into the homes, into the classrooms remotely, and the whole spectrum. And, you know, although not perfect, I think we have a very healthy and strong infrastructure still.
All right, thank you Craig.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Danielle?
I see that the text messaging is working. I received the Thanksgiving greetings, so that's great. Just another way for us to stay connected with folks. So I know that we'll continue this work as part of the communications committee as we look at the website stuff and rolling that out. But thank you for your efforts. I know that it's really difficult to keep up with all of the different types of things that, that seem to be thrown our, thrown your way with the students and, and supporting their, their learning needs as well as our staff so that they can connect with kids in the ways that they have available to them. So thanks.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, Craig, thank you so much for all your hard work as usual. Have a great Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you guys too.
Okay, Leah, Canaan Elementary.
All right, so you guys also have my quarterly report, so I will try and just do a quick summary because I see you have a number of things yet to do this evening. So I would say things have been going quite smoothly, given all the work that we had to put in place to get it moving. Enrollment's been holding steady. We've picked up actually three new students in the last week or so. Let's see, we've had a slight shift in quarter two. We had about 10 students, more or less, that returned from remote and spent the second quarter they returned to in school. They were mostly parents who were concerned for safety and I think just wanted to see how it went before they returned to school. So that's been nice. We have the same teachers teaching remotely in Q2 as we did in Q1. There is one sort of nuance to that, which is that the teacher who is teaching the first and second grade remote students had six of those students choose to return to school, and we've kept them all in the same group. So she is teaching six students in school at the same time she teaches the rest of them remotely, and it's really just lovely to see. They, the remote kids are up on the smart board in the morning and they have morning meetings together and they talk to each other and everyone can hear the teacher. And that's just, that's been just fascinating to watch her work out all the kinks with feedback on the systems and everything else, and it's working really quite well. Let's see, so some of the notable changes. We cut back on having staff members go to multiple buildings, especially during one day, which was happening in some cases. So a lot of our special ed service providers now go, they alternate weeks between EBS and CES instead of days. So that's been a bit of a change in the schedule second quarter. And along the same lines, we had to figure out how to solve the same problem because Crystal Darling was going back and forth every other day between CES and EBS as well. So that, that has caused us to change her structure. So she is now for the end, from now until the end of the year, she will be working exclusively at CES, and there'll be a similar position at EBS. But they will also be helping to pick up what Christina Swenson used to do for each of the elementary schools in terms of technology so that it's kind of a wash in terms of the number of people. So that's been a bit of a change and hasn't quite taken place yet, but is pending. And the other thing I wanted to say is actually we've noticed a couple, a couple sort of silver linings to some of the changes we had to put in place for COVID, which will be interesting to see if we decide to keep them once we're post-pandemic. The first is that our students, as they arrive, are now going directly to their classrooms instead of starting the day in the gym. But it does mean that by the time I walk around the building at about 8:02, instruction is literally happening because they're arriving in the rooms, they're eating breakfast before eight, they're getting settled in. And a lot of kind of the administrative start to the morning is happening actually before eight o'clock. So I think that's been really fascinating to watch, picking up all that extra time in the morning for instruction. So that's been good. And then the other thing that I'm sure Harrison will mention as well, because I saw it in his report, that we've noticed the same trend is that our behavior incidents that, particularly those that reach a level where we ask the student to leave the room and take a break are way, way down this year. They're about a fourth of what they have been in the past. I didn't feel like we had very many before, but we have next to none now. And I think a lot of it is just due to the fact that kids are physically spread out a great deal. They don't spend a lot of time in the halls, moving around at all anymore. And even when they do, they're quite far apart. So between that and having them a little further apart in the room, I think that that's been kind of interesting to watch. So that's some, two things we're kind of keeping an eye on is maybe things to consider going forward. What's caused the good trends and how to keep that going? And then just kind of the last things to point out that are in the report. And I just wanted to do a little shout out for an appreciation first to the entire staff, which have done an amazing job. They've been filling in all sorts of, you know, holes and being very flexible about what I need them to do on any given days. But in addition, just a special shout out to Tammy Daly, who threw a sort of last-minute Halloween drive-through celebration for the community. And it was just really fun to get a chance to see a lot of our students outside of school and their families. And a lot of our remote kids came too, which was, made it sort of special. And I think everything else is in the report. So I guess unless you have any questions, I'll hand it off to the next person.
All right, thank you Leah. Any questions for the board? Any comments? And that was quite a hit, your drive-through Halloween. It was the talk of the bus the following way, so it was a great time. We have one coming up, don't we? Next Saturday, a week from Saturday, there's a Christmas one.
The PTA has been doing a wonderful job trying to come up with creative answers to get people together to celebrate without physically being too close. So we're going to do our breakfast with Santa that we usually do is going to be kind of a drive-through Christmas celebration as well.
Great, thank you. That's wonderful. All right, moving on, we'll go to EBS and we'll principal little.
Hi Cookie.
Hi Harrison.
So elephant in the room, I wrote you like a 15-page report, and I could probably spend an hour going through it, but I won't because everyone on this call would be mad at me if I did. So I'll try to hit a couple of highlights. I'll just share, I, I am excited about a lot that's going on at EBS, and I'm, I'm pretty proud of the staff and the students at EBS as well. And I think that's sort of why there's so much in here. There are also some concerns that I've highlighted. I've, I've taken a pretty deep dive into some things I've not taken the board through before because I myself have not gotten as deep into these things before. So I'll just quickly kind of go in order through my report. I want to take you down to the bottom of the first page where it says staffing. And just point out, when we were talking about subs and staffing and people being out, I, I picked a single day and it wasn't a special day. It was just the day I was writing this report. And you'll note that there were six staff absences that day, most of which were related to COVID, not COVID-positive staff. I've not had one of those yet, but some exposure, some relatives, some travel, whatever. And I had two substitutes. So roughly 14% of my staff was out and I had two people to cover for the six. And that's, that's the norm. That is increasingly where we're at. So there are days when I'm up at 6:30 in the morning calling everybody I know, and I get in who I get in. But it is a challenge, and I think that will be a limiting factor before there's a spike in COVID in the area, to be completely frank, just looking at the way things are going. On the Student Behavior front, I'm just going to take you to the top of that second page, and you'll notice a bulleted list of all the different things we've done this year to modify the building. And I think these are all things that have an impact on student behavior. So as Leah mentioned, we're keeping the kids separate. We're not having them all in the gym in the morning. We're not sharing things because kids all have their own items of all these different things. So I, I don't want the building to stay like this forever. I'm not suggesting that we do that, but it will be interesting when we start to unpack and put things back together the way they used to be to look at, you know, what, what new tools we might have in our tool belt now. If you go down to the graphics on that second page, there are several charts there for you to take a look at. These are just two months. So this is the month of September and then October for those first two charts. And those are the, the sort of big behavioral infractions that we track. So you'll notice blue was, was two years ago, was my first year in the building as the principal. The red is, is last year, and then the, the yellow is this year. And you can see we're, we're down across the board on physical aggressions, on refusals, on disruption in both months. And again, it's a question of, you know, yes, we've been working really hard at this, and I think that's having some impact, the Common Language, the Student Support Center, the different consistencies we've put in place. But there are also the questions as to, you know, what are the things that we've done because of COVID that have helped with these numbers as well? Those next two graphics are just about, you know, our responses to the student infractions. So you can see that in neither the month of September nor October did I have to suspend a single student in school or out of school, which is the, the first. And the intentional physical contact, that's IPC, is when we actually physically put our hands on kids with, with our training and, and through, you know, certified staff, but to, to move kids because they're not safe in a given setting. And again, in the month of September, we didn't do that. And in the month of October, we had to do it once or twice. So it's, it's a stark change. And I think that the building in that way feels a lot more comfortable because we just don't have these kinds of distractions and episodes going on. I'm going to take you down as well to the third page and a couple of different charts that I gave you some scatter plots on some academic stuff. So this is just one gray level, but this is kind of a, a trend that we're noting at EBS, and I want to make the board aware of. What this is, is all these blue dots represent particular first-grade students right now. And those red lines represent sort of benchmarks, if you will. So I, I just, you know, we have so much data on our students, and I could have used a number of different points, but I use our DIBELS assessment and our, our DRA, the, the PSF from, from the, the DIBELS to basically chart our students and where they were in relationship to these benchmarks. So that, that first red line there, that one that you see, that box on the left, is where kids should be by, by the time they start kindergarten. Okay, so by the time the kids start kindergarten, they should not be to the left of or below that red line. By the time they start first grade, they should not be to the left of or below that red line. So what that's showing you is that in, in the month of September, we, we did not have a first-grade student that was where they were supposed to be on either one of the two data points that I used to make this chart. Not a single one. You can see in the month of October, we started to see some more movement. You'll notice that DRA does not change. There's September DRA, September DRA, September DRA. We don't take that data point again for a little while. We do have movement on the DIBELS front, and it has a lot to do with the new program that we're using to supplement the existing curriculum. The, sort of through a grassroots effort of this, of the special ed department and the teachers, recognizing that we had this deficit and needing to do something else, we adopted a new program. recognizing that we had this deficit and needing to do something else, we adopted a new program called Foundations, which has been used primarily with, in our special education department to this point. Uh, but we've been using it across the board and it has already been showing us significant gains in just a couple of months' time. So I, I'm cautiously optimistic about this new piece that we've, we've added to the puzzle. Um, but it, it, you know, it was one more thing on top of all the other new things that we were doing this year to prepare ourselves for, for, um, COVID nineteen. Um, so we're going to watch this really carefully and we are, we are keeping track of every single one of our students. Um, but you know, we, we've noted that there are a lot of special ed referrals at E V S the last couple of years. And I think we're starting to see that there might be some holes in our curriculum and/or in our instructional practices that we need to fill in. And, and we're starting to do just that. Um, I think that for the most part, everything else on here, um, you know, I would encourage you to take a look at, at, at your leisure, uh, some other numbers and statistics for you. But really those two big things, the behavior and, and that academic challenge on the literacy front were the things that I wanted to highlight for you this evening. Uh, if there are any questions, I'm happy to, to speak to those.
Any questions for Harrison? Any comments? Bridgette?
Hey Harrison. Just looking through this, um, and I noticed it, it's something that I bring up frequently in our E I C meeting. And, and I noticed you did make a note about, um, some of the S E L needs. Um, so I think as we go forward and I was just trying to see if I could find my notes from that, but we were, um, talking about just some of those for our next meeting, revisiting, seeing how things are going. Especially in this time, because I've, you know, I've just noticed some stuff as well, though my um, interaction is very limited with number of students. But I was kind of wondering where we were at with that, both because of a pandemic and how students are transitioning, um, and just how things were looking. Uh, you know, it's one of our goals in E I C to just monitor that and kind of expand upon it. So, um, probably not at the December meeting, but maybe it's something we can talk about for one of the, the next couple of meetings, just, you know, looking at that and discussing, you know, some of what's being seen at all levels. If, if other people are making those observations as well and just, you know, the suggestions and stuff to look forward.
Yeah, we'd be happy to go into that more deeply with, with the E S E committee. Um, I do have a paragraph in here about, about choose love, the new curriculum we're using. And it, it seems to be, um, well received by the staff and the students thus far. We don't have data around it because there is not a data tracking tool, um, accompanying choose love. We had one with Desa. We didn't think it was that great. Um, I, I maintain that it wasn't a very objective or, or helpful tool, but now we, we really don't have one at all. Um, so that is something I think choose love, we can work with and, and continue to, to, um, grow. But we will need to supplement choose love with something as well, because we really should be watching that the same way we watch our literacy numbers.
Okay. Thank you, Harrison. Any other questions?
I've got one.
Brewster?
Yeah, I did yourself again, Harrison. I wouldn't expect anything less of you. Send us a volume of your information for quarterly report. Only question I got is, are you, maybe it's mute point. Uh, your kids eating well at your school?
I, I would say the food program, um, is, is going quite well. Um, we did have a transition in, in staffing, um, but that went, went pretty smoothly. Um, the, the free meals program is helpful. And I'll be honest with you. Um, you know, we spent a lot of time and energy the last couple of years getting the whole balance piece, uh, that the, uh, the money around the, the lunch accounts under control. And, um, I think we did good work with that. But this year, we're not even doing anything with that at all, because it's all free for kids. Uh, if the state of New Hampshire wants to continue with this process, uh, we would not complain at all. Um, it, it does compromise the, the funds that we get through. Um, the free reduced numbers tell us what our title eligibility is, and that, that's been an issue as well. It's a whole tangent I could go off on. Um, but yes, kids are eating. I think they're well fed. Um, breakfast and lunch. I think it's been nice eating in the rooms, although that's, there, there are people who would tell you otherwise. But, um, yes, I think the food program is, is, uh, going very well right now, Brewster.
Okay. Have a good Thanksgiving. See you.
Thanks Brewster.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope. Um, I, uh, thank you. Want to thank Harrison for this information. Um, uh, moving, a couple of things sort of, uh, hit me moving forward. Um, I mean, uh, one of the things, my concerns, it's like, there is so much going on with COVID nineteen. Um, and obviously it is easy to, you know, there's to let academics kind of slip through. I mean, they're not, not, nobody's letting academics slip through the cracks. I understand that. But to keep an eye on these things and to keep an eye on the numbers. I know that Nancy, uh, the curriculum director's report speaks to this a little bit, where the kids were coming in, uh, you know, what they might've lost in the spring. Um, so I just think it's super, super important. Um, you know, to keep everybody, I mean, and I know you are, to keep, uh, the, your eye on this ball moving forward. Um, and it's, there's so much going on. I can't even imagine, you know, having to do this, but I'm, you know, it's, it's super important. Um, across the board, I'm hearing that, um, you know, the sub is an issue, the, um, you know, and, um, I also know in the decision matrix, um, that when we have to determine the level of the school impact, whether, um, the criterion they're looking at is the transmission within the facility. But they're also looking at student, uh, absenteeism, um, and, um, staff. So I guess the staff capacity and absenteeism, I'm curious, and this isn't necessarily a question for Harrison. Um, you know, keeping track of that as a whole. Um, moving forward, I mean, maybe that's more an Amanda question. So, um, you know, and what we can do about it. I know Amanda spoke a little bit to it about the sub issue, but, um, you know, absenteeism, staffing, that kind of thing.
Uh, so I hope, I think I hear your question being, are we tracking this and do we have a plan for it? So yes, I would say that anytime that there is a serious shortage. Um, well, first of all, um, the S A U receives the daily attendance sheets from all the buildings. So we know exactly how many teachers, exactly how many students and which students, we do see it by name, who are absent. So we have a, our finger on the pulse at the S A U office. When Harrison's short, he will call me and look for advice. When Leah or Tom or Kevin are short, staff, they do call me and look for advice. So we are always paying attention to that. Uh, but it is a threshold that we worry about. If we cannot physically staff the buildings, uh, then we do have a serious issue. We also have in the M O A some leeway so that we are using paraprofessionals to go in, like say a teacher is out on quarantine, but they're still teaching remotely. So we do have, and I know Tom Fitzgerald has been very, very creative in doing this. He will have, uh, a, a paraprofessional or another staff member sit in a classroom while the teacher remotes in, provides the instruction, but that other adult is in the room to better supervise the students. I think he's even had times where kids are in a study hall type of situation and they're remoting into the classroom. But he, he does have another, uh, paraprofessional just supervising those kids for that time. So we have some creative ways that we are handling it. That is not to be said that we may not, that we, we also may hit the threshold where we cannot staff the buildings. So that is a concern. Um, and as far as tracking, each school nurse uh, has a track and a report that is sent to D H H S on a weekly, uh, basis of how many staff or students are COVID positive or out on quarantine. So that is information we provide to the state.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions on Harrison's report? Okay. Saying, uh, thank you, Harrison. Have a great Thanksgiving. Next up, we have Indian River School Principal Kevin Toll.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To, to start my report, I'd just like to acknowledge my entire staff. Uh, the start of our school year, uh, certainly was an interesting one uh, with many challenges and, uh, changes day to day. Uh, and they've, they've stepped up to the plate and done a great job with that. Uh, as well as our athletic department, we did have fall sports. Uh, and I think, uh, Mr. Thompson and the coaches did a good job at getting, uh, that off the ground and getting as much playing time as we could. Some were shortened due to outbreaks in different communities. But, uh, uh, again, it just speaks to the caliber of the people that I work with every day. And, uh, I can't say enough, uh, good things about my staff. No, we're not perfect, but day in and day out, uh, they tackle the problems head on. So, uh, that's my acknowledgements. Professional training, I have one shout out to Candy Carter. Uh, she received training from the farm to school program. And we're planting garden with the kids next spring, uh, in some of our beds around the school. So, uh, along with that, our regular trainings, which have all been Zoom mandatory trainings, trainings with the D O E for the S A S testing. Uh, and, uh, it all was accomplished in a timely fashion. So kudos again to the staff. Our challenges, we know what that is. Keeping school open in the midst of a pandemic. Uh, it was nice to find out that I am having staff invite people from the community in to the classrooms in the outdoor setting. Uh, we had the, uh, New Hampshire Agricultural, uh, zoom in with the Oxen Program to grade six. And they're going to do that again later on with grade eight. Uh, we also had the New Hampshire Fishing Game come and meet Mrs. Ferland's, uh, classroom in the outdoor classroom. He met him at the door and they worked in the classroom right outside my window. Uh, and so we have had a chance for the community to be involved in our school in some, uh, extra, extra, um, curriculum activities. Uh, so, uh, it continues to be a challenge. The second quarter, uh, the movement was minimal. I think the biggest movement was, uh, uh, to help with the technology. Uh, we moved Holly back to the library and Ian Henry to be a remote teacher for grade seven. And, uh, we hired Willie Stone, who was a pair for us to do the grade seven language arts. So that's probably the biggest shift in the, in the whole first quarter, the second quarter with remote and in the learning, uh, process. Uh, but very few kids, I think the parents and the kids were happy with the selections that they made for the first quarter and stayed with it. Uh, one interesting note, since people are bringing it up on changes due to, um, the changes in our building, we have no lost and found. For the first time in eleven years, I have nothing left behind. There's an adult with every kid in the hallway, everywhere they go, pick that up, that's yours, take it with you. And I used to have a pile of clothes outside my door. There's nothing there. We noticed it the other day, like, there's no lost and found. This is great. So if we can do that getting back to normal, I would like that. I would like that. So that is my report. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Kevin? That's a big accomplishment, Kevin. No lost and found. Let me say, I had one lost hat on the bus and he took it this morning. And I was like, there is nothing.
That is good.
I also wanted to say thank you, Kevin. I know, you know, we had to change things up with the buses up there on top. But, uh, that's working fabulous. Everyone is getting off and, um, there's no, no lines. Everyone's been moving along. So, uh, the system works. It works great at Kenan Elementary for us as well. So, uh, I greatly appreciate that. Any other questions or comments, uh, on the I R S report? All right. Saying done. Have a happy Thanksgiving, Kevin. We'll see you Monday.
Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Okay. Last but not least. Hello, Tom Fitzgerald, Masco High School Principal.
Good evening, everybody. You have my, um, written report. So, um, as Kevin said, I have a major shout out to my staff. I think they've done an incredible job, as have our kids. Talk about adapting, um, you know, from block scheduling to A B cohorts to different days to a wind block. Um, we threw an awful lot at people to begin this school year. And I do not think it could be working more seamlessly than it is working at this point. Um, sure, kids have given up a lot. They can't see their friends in the other cohorts. But our kids get to eat in the cafeteria. They've been great about social distancing, um, not using their lockers, all that kind of stuff. Um, but it's worked really well. Having the flex days for first quarter really helped us out in terms of testing. We got all the S A T tests in that we need to get in. We got all our map testing done without impacting instructional time, which was always, um, you know, uh, an issue with high school and we didn't have to do that at all. Um, you know, so that's worked well. We've done a really good job. Um, my teachers, uh, the, the one thing that made me the proudest so far this year was when we had our blip and we had two days, we had to go to remote. All I had to do is walk into the staff meetings and say, here's the schedule. You guys are professionals at this. Go and do it. And those two days were flawless. And the kids thought the schedule went well. Teachers thought it went way better than the spring because it was more structured. Um, so all the educational pieces are working well. We looked at our map scores. Um, it does not look at the higher grades, like there was a lot of loss or a lot of, um, damage, so to speak, from remote learning. Our teachers feel like our kids are relatively on track at this point for where they should be in terms of their courses. Grades for first quarter looked about normal. Um, we're keeping really good track of the kids who kind of fallen off, you know, the radar a little bit. Uh, we're really happy with, um, the introduction of our advisory program during when. And a lot of credit goes now to Peter Adesano, who's been kind of spearheading that for us. And also our new teacher, Kelsey Winkler, who we found out recently has not only a passion, but great expertise in the area of S E L. So that's a pretty tricky thing to implement at the high school, but we think that's going well. Um, you know, I'm, I know Isabel talked a little bit about it, but we managed to get our fall sports in. Um, it didn't look exactly like it used, you know, it normally looks, but you know, our teams all got to play and they, they all represented us well. Um, we introduced the pep band for the first time. Unfortunately, they never got to play the game, but they did perform for the school. So we're really excited about Amy Morse putting that together. You know, drama's looking a little different this year. Mr. Sweetland and Mr. Chalker are filming, um, an original play written by Mr. Chalker. So that's complete and will be, um, either on Netflix or Apple T V. No, not really, but we will, we will stream it somehow. So, so people can see it. Um, you know, and the seniors, you know, they did lose homecoming, but you know, I had a conversation with, you know, the executive council of, of student council today about what winter carnival could look like and when we could do, um, a bonfire, et cetera, et cetera. So we're not giving out, um, giving up hoping about that. You know, we know that where we're going, we know how to do graduation traditionally for these kids. So, you know, they have hope about all that kind of stuff. And, um, the one thing that has fallen by the side, unfortunately, is we haven't been able to do much with, you know, the experiencing the arts, which has been a really valuable program for us, because we haven't been able to bring people in the building. And, you know, the new initiative about, you know, the kids in lieu of, um, fundraising, doing the service learning projects, we're hoping it, hoping we can get that in later on in the spring. Um, so we're still holding out hope. E L Os were a little spotty at this point, but we do have some kids out doing a few things. Um, but overall, um, the fact that we're still in school and it's Thanksgiving, we'll take it. We'll take it.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Anyone have any questions or comments on Tom's report? Daniel?
So one of the things that I think went, went really well, I know I had a report from at least one, maybe both of my high school students is that when we did have to pivot to remote, um, at the, at the high school, synchronous remote learning, um, synchronous remote learning and the kind of the structure that went with that was very well received. So kudos to the staff and the administrators for helping to make that happen because I think it, it helped to, it helped to keep them in a, in a sequence and in that, in that structure. Instead of just yet another day where they were kind of clicking links or completing assignments on their own, but being able to see each other on the screen, that, that was something that I think was, was very helpful.
Thank you, Danielle. Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Tom. And have yourself a good Thanksgiving and we'll see you Monday.
Thank you, you too, guys.
All right, next on the agenda, we have the sports update. And you all have that in your pocket tonight. Basically, the listing for the GPAs for the sports. Wrestling and indoor track update, indoor track will be dependent on college facilities. Dartmouth and Phillips Exeter are not opening. UNH and Plymouth will give decision to IT Committee by January 1st. If we do not have a season, we will keep it in-house and prepare for the spring sports with the fitness club type setup. Wrestling, many schools have come out and said that they will not offer wrestling. We will remain in-house strictly skills, drills, conditioning, and reassess the state of wrestling as the season progresses. Regional schedule finalized competitions to begin on January 11th of 2021. Each week, our cohort competes against one school. Those schools will include Hanover, Lebanon, Newport, Stevens, Fall Mountain, Sunapee, and Newfoundland. Athletes during the remote learning process. Proposed language to be added to our district matrix. In the event that we have to transition, transition to remote learning, extracurricular activities can continue remotely as determined by the building principal and the advisor. Athletics will follow guidelines from New Hampshire DHHS and the NHIAA when determining how to move forward in the event of remote learning. Additionally, extracurricular groups are encouraged to use technology to form online communities where students and staff can meet remotely. If in-person interactions are not possible. And I'm assuming this all came from our athletic director, Rodney Brown. Thank you. So this is in our board packets. And if you have any questions or comments on that, you can reach out to the admin, the athletic director. And, you know, and he'll be glad to answer those, I am sure. Any questions or comments on that? I think I found that to be very helpful. It was a little bit more guidance from the last update we had. Now we know which, you know, community schools will be dealing with and watch those numbers as COVID is closest we can. Okay, we'll move on to new business. What's that? Oh, Todd, where are you?
Hey, you can, you can.
I knew I was missing someone, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No updates at IRS, thank you. We're getting ready for the season, best like the high school is. We're finalizing basketball coaching staff. We look to start practices in the middle of December and start games right around the same time as the high school. On January 11th, we're looking at a 10 to 12 game season. Hopefully with the same bubble as the high school, we may need to replace the Hanover team, the Hanover games, because they will be playing rec ball in-house, if only, if anything, this, this winter. Signups are going on, looks like we have a good group of kids that want to play. I did have a nice discussion with a student today who was really concerned about going to other gyms to play or playing games in general at all. And, and I stressed to her that, you know, this, it is more than okay this year. If you only want to practice with your team at your own school, that is more than okay and would be understandable this year. So pushing forward, kind of looking for kids that have played sports in the past and might be a little bit concerned and, and seeing what we can do to make them feel comfortable to, to get out and get some exercising and, and doing stuff after school again. So I received the Rodney's final schedule and his transportation needs. So now I'll work around his needs to hopefully not have buses requested on the same days. And I guess we'll wait and see what comes up next week. It sounds like schools are pretty much in our area wanting to play sports this, this winter. So they're still trickling in and boards are voting on them. So we'll see how far we get this season and hopefully we can say we had another successful on this year.
Great, yes, that sounds good. Dr. Bouffet, did you have a comment?
More, more of a question, I think, and maybe best directed to Rodney, but perhaps Todd can, can answer. I'm a little perplexed, I guess, about how team sports can be played remotely as suggested by the NHIAA.
Team sports can be played remotely. Dr. Bouffet, do you mean that students can be learning remotely, but still participate in sports? Is that a question?
No, as I understood that thing that, or that message that Rodney had suggested that the NHIAA said something about, and I'll have to look it up, about playing remotely or, or training remotely. And I don't understand how a team sport can do that.
That kind of brings up wanting to just kind of reiterate what Rodney had in his little note was, I think we should really be able to determine if we do need to pivot to a longer period of time of remote learning, what does that do to our sports teams? Because getting questioned from kids already, you know, if we have to pivot to remote learning and it's not necessarily because of things going around in our upper valley, but going on in other parts of the state, you know, why do they, they have to stop playing sports? So I, I think maybe what Rodney meant by some of that was questioning what, what our plan is to do and thinking of brainstorming ways as far as how, how the, the teams can still communicate without being around, you know, together constantly.
So Dr. Bouffet, just let me reread that for you. So it says, athletes will follow guidance from New Hampshire DHHS and the New Hampshire and NHIAA when determining how to move forward in the event of remote learning. Additionally, extracurricular groups are encouraged to use technology to form an online community where students and staff can meet remotely. If in-person interactions are not possible. So I don't think they'll be paying any competitions, but, you know, if they can set up something in their garage to be able to still do, you know, their conditioning and so forth and still meet as a group on a computer. I think that's where that essence is coming from. Because obviously you wouldn't be able to put anybody in the same room if, you know, we're shut down as far as the pandemic. So the remote piece, I think, would just to keep some type of a, a community for those athletes to keep moving forward, even though it's all remote learning. Does that sound better?
It, it does. And I, I was envisioning the, the capability for individual conditioning and perhaps some individual skill development. But I, I didn't understand the, how that could be done as a team, even with technology, but perhaps it can.
Yeah, I think that one of the things that has happened, I know for fall sports, several, maybe all of the teams had Google Classroom set up for their teams so that they could be communicating about different types of things. And that would be my guess is that it's just, you know, this, this would be a recommendation in order to preserve the community, even if they're not seen or they're in person. At any clubs and sports, other groups would be able to use technology that they're using in their classrooms, such as Google Classroom, in order to have either video chats or online discussions about stuff. And that could include, you know, coaches sharing a YouTube link for a video that shows a workout you can do in your garage. Right? So I think there's, my guess is that probably what, what is meant by that.
Okay.
There isn't any guidance currently on this, though, right? From either the NH DHHS or the NHIAA on this specific issue, from what I can tell, right?
No, I don't think so, according to what this is said, when, you know, that would be determined if we had to go fully remote and we would follow, follow that guidance. Correct, Amanda?
Yep, that's correct. So Rodney's response and his little portion of this update, as this pertains to what the, relating to remote instruction or remote use for athletes of continuing to practice their sports, is in response to the board asking him if we would be following the matrix last time or if he would be creating his own matrix as it pertains to sports. This right now is an extremely gray area because I'm not sure as a district how you close schools or close a district, but allow sports teams to continue to travel and play. So that's the concern I have. And you're seeing that everywhere. You're seeing schools close, right? So you have a high school that closes, but their team is scheduled to play in the playoffs and they continue to have that game. So I think this is a bigger discussion, bigger than just our school board. This is a discussion for the state to determine if it is feasible for a school to be closed, but for those sports teams to still travel and participate in a competition and potentially spread COVID to other teams. So you've seen it, I've seen it both ways. I've seen schools close and the sports teams not travel. I've also seen schools close and the sports teams continue to travel and play. So this is a very large question and we're monitoring this all the time and trying to figure out what the best plan is and how do we fit sports into the opening and closing matrix that we currently have.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or discussion on this?
I had a quick one. Don't we have a, like a, like a certain app that coaches are supposed to use to be able to communicate with, with each other, with all the, the athletes and the parents and stuff like that at the high school level? I thought we had discussed like, because they were using a bunch of different ones. And so we said, this is the app that you guys have to use. I know Rodney's not here, that, that he would answer.
You're, you're correct, Tim. We do have that app and it's called, off the top of my head, I don't know, but we had some teachers. I know that Donna Hazelton also uses it in her classroom. But yes, we did encourage all of our coaches to use that. But in light of COVID, we've also set up the Google Classroom that Danielle.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's a really easy and, and really good way. And, and I think that's something we could probably keep going in the future, so.
So we are using both.
So I think it's remind.
Oh, yes, thank you, Craig.
Okay, all right, that's one I've heard, okay.
Looks like Dr. Bouffet.
Dr. Bouffet?
I would have one additional thought is that the conservative default should be if the schools go remote, team sports stop.
Right, and like I said, it's, it's, you know, basically what we've been trying to figure out what we need to do. And, you know, we've been very cautious and, you know, we followed every guideline, every recommendation. So Amanda, I don't know if you have any more to add? Nope, you were on before.
So I do think that it is reasonable and to expect that. However, I want to make sure that there's some type of agreement with schools, right? So that's my concern. I want everything to be fair. I don't want our kids to miss out and Lebanon kids to move forward. So I think it's important that we make sure that whatever the playing field, if you will, is, that it's fair and that the rules are adhered to by everyone. This should not be a district by district basis. It should not be a district by district determination. Do you play if you're, you have a case of COVID at your high school? Or do you move, or do you choose not to play, right? It shouldn't be a choice made by a district. It should be a blanket statement over the state of New Hampshire.
Okay, thank you, Amanda.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with that. I wish, like so many other things, there was some guidance from the state that would allow for this to be something that, that happens with some consistency. You know, the, this, the, the grayest of the gray area is what if we are, what if we're remote because of staff shortages and not because of direct COVID? You know, so that's something where we're, you know, it's the capacity of, of us to be able to provide that learning opportunity in person, you know, and not necessarily direct COVID cases within the school community. And that is, I, I kind of see that as the greatest of the gray right now because that's really penalizing the kids for something they have absolutely no control over. They have any control over the amount of COVID transmission within the school community itself. But that's something that they get to have that direct responsibility for, as we've talked about before. The students, the students and staff that are here, they know that if they, and, and the athletes in particular, they know that if they want to be able to have a sport season, that continues or that even starts, that they have to minimize their exposure opportunities. And so I think that's, that may be something that we'll, we'll have to navigate.
Okay, thank you, Danielle. So moving forward, any other questions or anything on the sports update? Okay. Basically, it was just an overview of the, of the sports update that was in the packet, Brewster. Okay, we'll move on now under new business to the NHIAA Life of an Athlete Funding. We have a $1,500.
I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the $1,500 grant from the NHIAA for the Life of an Athlete Program.
Thank you, Danielle.
I'll second that.
Kathleen, thank you. Okay, any discussion? Any comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, and I will do a roll call vote on the, accepting the $1,500 grant from, for the Life of the Athlete Program from NHIAA, signified by saying aye. Tim Josephson?
Aye.
Danielle Thompson?
Aye.
Hope's Drag Now?
Aye.
Bridgette LeBree?
Aye.
Kathleen Stacey?
Aye.
Brewster Gove? And Cookie Hebert, yes. So that's 7-0-0, so that passes, that is going to accept. Yes, Bridgette.
I would just have Brewster say aye again because he wasn't quite unmuted yet when he said it.
Okay. Brewster Gove?
Yes.
Nope, you're not unmuted.
Keep punching the button, there you go, how's that?
Yes.
I'm on, all right, yes.
Thank you, okay. Thank you, Bridgette. Second up is the public hearing that we had for the Supplement Public School Response Fund for the amount of $213,600 for COVID-related expenses. We're looking for approval to accept those funds.
I'll make a motion that we accept the funds of $213,600 from the state of New Hampshire for COVID-related expenses.
Second.
Bridgette LeBree for the second. Discussion, any questions? Okay, I'd like to thank Deb Ford for working on this and keeping everything straight for us. Okay, so we'll do another roll call vote. Tim Josephson?
Aye.
Bridgette LeBree?
Aye.
Hope's Drag Now?
Aye.
Kathleen Stacey?
Aye.
Brewster Gove?
Aye.
Danielle Thompson?
Aye.
And Cookie Hebert, aye. So that passes unanimously, 7-0-0. Thank you so much again, Deb, and thank you for the program. Next up, we have the budget fiscal year '22. Okay, this is the proposed superintendent's budget. Deb, you want to speak to this?
I'm sure, as we discussed earlier, the total proposed superintendent's budget is $29,531,828. This is an increase of 0.98%, which amounts to $287,791. The Budget Committee will be approving this on December 7th. But last year, on the school board approved the superintendent's budget. We, we, I believe we will have one adjustment to service awards that I will bring to the next meeting.
Okay. Are you looking for an approval of this one here tonight?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the proposed superintendent's budget for school year, for fiscal year 2022, 2023, as presented.
Second.
2021, 2022.
I'm sorry, 2021 dash 2022.
Thank you, Tim. And Kathleen, Kathleen Stacey for the second. And the amount of that is $29,531,828. Okay, any discussion, any questions? Okay, seeing none. Roll call vote. Tim Josephson?
Aye.
Bridgette Labrie?
Aye.
Hope Stragnow?
Aye.
Kathleen Stacey?
Aye.
Brewster Gove? We didn't hear you.
Epstein.
Epstein. Danielle Thompson?
Aye.
And Cookie Hebert, aye. So we have six to the affirmative, no nos, and one abstention, and that would be Brewster Gove. Okay, thank you all so much. Moving forward to the default budget, you know, you have that in your packet as well. I think Deb, in our, her report had given the information in regards to the final numbers and why it's up more than the proposed budget. I don't know if Deb wanted to talk anymore to it, or if anyone has questions, we can put it on the table. Why don't we entertain a motion, so we'll open it up for discussion, sorry.
I'll make a motion that we accept as presented, the default budget for school year 2021 through 2022.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay. And and the final number on that would be $29,757,734, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any more comments? Okay, seeing none. Roll call vote. Tim Josephson?
Aye.
Bridgette Labrie?
Aye.
Hope Stragnow?
Aye.
Kathleen Stacey?
Aye.
Brewster Gove? Nope, we didn't hear you.
Aye.
Okay, Danielle Thompson?
Aye.
And Cookie Hebert, aye. So that's seven in the affirmative, no negatives, and no abstentions. That passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we're going to be grouping some policies. We had done this at the last meeting, so I will read the ones that will be going for second reading tonight, and then I'll ask for a motion from two board members to approve. So the first group that we'll be doing will be policy ADC, GBED, JICG, prohibes regarding use and possession of tobacco products, e-cigarettes, and e-liquids in and on school facilities and grounds for second reading. We have policy IHAMA, Teaching About Alcohol, Drugs, and Tobacco, for second reading. Policy EBCA, Crisis Prevention and Emergency Response Plans for second reading. Policy EBCB, Fire in All Hazard Drills for second reading. And we have policy EH, Public Access to School District Records for second reading. Policy EH-R, Administrative Procedures for Public Access to District Records, Right to Know Request, for second reading. Policy BEDG Minutes for second reading. Policy GCCBC, Family and Medical Leave Act for second reading. Procedures for GCCBC-F, Family Medical Leave Request for Leave. And that's it for the second reading group.
I'll make a motion that we adopt for second, that we approve for second reading and adoption, all policies that Cookie just listed.
Second.
Danielle Thompson for the second. Any discussion, any questions?
I have one on one that's down towards the end. I have a question on EBCB, unless someone else has one of the other ones before that.
EBCB, the Fire in All Hazards Drill? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, okay, so looking at this, on the fifth line, so it talks about, or so on the third line says, four such drills should be all hazard response drills, and at least one must test emergency response to an armed assailant. The armed assailant drill may be discussion-based. I would feel much more comfortable if that said, the armed assailant drill shall be discussion-based. And something after the word based, something to the effect of, and not acted out, because I think it's important that an armed assailant drill does not reenact an actual armed assailant. Every study that is done on these types of drills has demonstrated severe harm to students. It doesn't do any, it's not more effective. So that is my, that's my reasoning for doing that, because with the may, it allows you to still do an active shooter, active walking around the building kind of thing. And so that's my, that's my reasoning for wanting to change that to shall and say, they shall be discussion-based and not acted out.
Amanda?
I'm sure, I would say that would be at the discretion of the board, the may to shall change. I would say, though, that I don't know as to you need anything after that, Tim, just because this discussion base is a tabletop exercise done with only administrators, potentially teachers, no students are involved in the discussion-based slash tabletop exercise.
Okay, then I would be fine if it was just shall, then, so.
Is the board comfortable with that change? Okay, okay. And if that could be
Thank you.
noted and changed, any other questions or any other comments on the other policies? Okay. Seeing none, do roll call. Okay, Tim Josephson?
Aye.
Danielle Thompson?
Aye.
Bridgette Labrie?
Aye.
Hope Stragnow?
Aye.
Kathleen Stacey?
Aye.
Brewster Gove?
Aye.
Cookie He, Cookie Hebert, yes. And those all pass with that one change to policy EBCB. The next group will be first readings, and then I will do the rescinding of four policies. So the next group will be for first reading, policy DK, Payments, Checks, and Manifests. Policy DGA, Authorized Signatures. Policy DGA-R, School Student Activity Account Procedures. Policy DIH, Fraud Prevention and Fiscal Management. Policy EHAC, Electronic Digital Records and Signatures. Policy JLCF, Wellness. Policy AD, Philosophy of School District. Policy ADB, Philosophy of Special Education and Education for Students with Disability. Oh, that one's going to be rescinded, never mind that one. That's another one, sorry. Policy IHCD-LEB, Advanced Course Work, Advanced Placement Courses, and STEM Dual and Concurrent Enrollment Program. And policy IKFG, Career Readiness Pathways and Credentials for First Reading. Do I have a
I'll make a motion that we accept for first reading the policies as listed and read by Cookie.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, do we have any questions, any comments? I think they're pretty straightforward.
Was there anything in any of these policies that were changed or updated, or things that we should know about?
If you would like me to go through, I can go through all of them, but these are all policies that were in current updates from the New Hampshire School Board Association. So it's that web of, they were either updated or they were tied to an updated policy. So Tim and Bridgette, we all reviewed them, and these were pretty straightforward and simple. I think the electronic signature is one that is needed by COVID at the next grouping of policies that you will receive next meeting. You will notice that there are quite a few that are directly related to COVID and relating to responses to pandemics. But overall, these are changes that we made that are in response to the school board association's updates.
Okay.
And policies we didn't have.
Okay, perfect.
Electronic signature.
Okay. Anything further as far as the first reading on these group, this group of policies? Okay, seeing none, roll call. Tim Josephson?
Aye.
Bridgette Labrie?
Aye.
Danielle Thompson?
Aye.
Hope Stragnow?
Aye.
Kathleen Stacey?
Aye.
Brewster Gove?
Yes, yes.
Cookie Hebert, yes, so they all pass for first reading. There was one policy, policy ADB, Philosophy of Special Education and Education of Students with Disabilities, that will be rescinded once we come back for second reading and adopt policy AD. So that one there on our list will not be dealt with tonight, and we'll come back with the next group. We do have four policies, however, that we will rescind now that we have adopted the other policies that were in the first grouping. Policy ADC-R, Tobacco Products Ban, rescind with adoption of policy ADC. Policy EBCB-R, Fire Exit Drills in Educational Occupancies, rescind with the adoption of policy EBCB. Policy KDB, Public Records Request, will be rescinded with the adoption of policy EH. And policy KDB-R, Procedures for Requests for Records, rescind with adoption of policy EH-R. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a
I'll make a motion to rescind the policies as Cookie just listed.
I'll second.
Thank you, Bridgette, and thank you, Tim. Any discussion, any questions, any comments? Okay, seeing none. We'll do a roll call for the rescind of those, and that'll be Tim Josephson?
Aye.
Bridgette Labrie?
Aye.
Hope Stragnow?
Aye.
Danielle Thompson?
Aye.
Kathleen Stacey?
Aye.
Brewster Gove? And Cookie Hebert, yes. Those have been rescinded, seven zero zero. Okay, well, we got through that one, okay? Agenda items for the next meeting, we will have our usual committee meeting reports, sports update, Aspen App Institute, and so forth. Is there anything in particular that any of the board members would like to see on our agenda next time? We will have the warrant articles coming from Deb in regards to the proposed warrants for the March election. I don't know if there's anything else at this time. Okay, and seeing none, but if you, Deb, did you have something else?
I'm just going to say financing facilities, so I have the capital improvement plan for approval as well.
Okay, very good. That'll be important to go with the warrant article for the facilities that we're looking to put in. We'll have a better figure then in regards to that amount. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I can open it up to public comment. We do not have, no one here in the auditorium, so if there's anyone in Zoom land that would like to say something, please let me know. And I will go through the list to see. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. Okay, so we'll move on. Personnel resignations and nominations.
We do not have any personnel nominations or resignations at this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anything for non-public for the session?
Yes, we do have reason for non-public RSA 91-A colon three, Roman numeral two, section B, hiring.
We'll have to go in non-public.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Bridgette Labrie? And Bridgette, this is going to be, and Brewster, this is RSA 91-A semicolon three slash two under B. I'll do a roll call vote. Tim Josephson?
Yes.
Bridgette Labrie?
Yes.
Hope Stragnow?
Yes.
Danielle Thompson?
Yes.
Kathleen Stacey?
Yes.
Brewster Gove?
Yes.
And Cookie Hebert, yes, we are in non-public. Anyone out in Zoom land, you can go into the waiting room. Camilla will reopen you up when we're done with our meeting.
We're recording and everybody's back.
Everybody's back, okay. And this was just a notice for substitutes. We have no nominations tonight. And I can adjourn the meeting at 8:18. Thank you, everyone, for your patience.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.